Father, we thank you.
We're recording.
For this beautiful, sunshiny day and for your son who lives within our hearts. We thank you for this Advent season and for this Bible study that we have of angels. We ask that you be with each one of us. Be with Ray as she has this anxiety and just give her a calm heart and a peaceful mind. And us as we are aware of this and that we are just able to share and be able to help that process. We just ask that you bless us in our discussion and allow what is said and done to lift us up and to glorify your son's precious name. Amen.
Thank you.
Wallace, she's a retired pastor too.
Oh, I never met him. You're new too.
Yeah, Larry. I know, it's his brother-in-law.
Yeah, Tim wanted to know if I wanted to come today and I said, oh, no, it'll be all right. Oh, you want to see your wife, Larry? Yeah, I think I'll go with you.
Oh, it's fine. It is. It is fine.
Can I bring you some peanut rattle?
Now, you can sing with this or you can wait till it's over and sing by yourself. Either way.
No pressure, right?
There's a napkin.
I don't mind peanuts, remember?
Oh, well, I don't get it. I've never met you.
Set the pace a little bit. Hail, hail the newborn.
Larry.
Oh, he's got a great voice.
You need to be in the choir.
Yes, he's doing the cantata.
Yeah, he does.
He's singing in the cantata, so yeah.
Hey, praise the Lord.
Oh, it's going to get better.
All right.
He says he hadn't warmed up yet. Some do.
Okay.
What?
I just ask if you have books.
Yeah, they have the student guide. You have a leader guide.
Oh, I've got the answers.
Where'd you get that?
All right.
That's an extra one.
It's added an extra one?
That's the leader's bagging.
Oh, right.
Oh, that's okay.
I had gone to a church camp and was the director of this church camp. And they had asked in that, I got the counselors all together. Each morning we had a quick little session to pull us all together, make sure we were all on the same page. And I would all ask each morning for a God sighting. Has anybody seen? Any witnesses of a God sighting? If you weren't looking for it, you'd not see it. But if we were openly looking for one, people were seeing. By the time we got to Thursday, before I could even say, hey, have we seen a God sighting? Someone said, I'd like to start. And I thought, oh, before I even asked, could we not start with the question of God sighting? Because I haven't seen any and it just kind of bothers me since I'm not having any to have that question thrown at us. And I thought, well, that's kind of an odd thing to share. Said, well, if you're not, that's okay if you're not seeing it, you know. But some have, obviously, we've been giving them. So other than Bill here, you know, if you have, I'm going to go ahead and invite you to share that. But if you haven't seen, but if you're not looking for it, you're not going to find it. And much like the angel of Christmas, if we're not looking for the angel, you're not going to find it. But ever since the study, if you're looking for it, you're more apt to discover one. You might not have yet, but if you're looking for one, you're more apt to find one. And so I opened it up from last week, the week before. Ha, ha, has anyone seen the presence of an angel in your daily walk? Might not.
No, but I felt them.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, you felt one.
My wife.
It was wonderful. Feels pretty good?
It, it. I had angels once. I was going down a road pretty fast. I drove a semi. And there was two deer ahead of me. And, and they were like this, that actually their heads were like this at each. And I was not hallucinating because I didn't do drugs. I watched those, I watched those deer go like this. I'm serious. I woke up my husband and I says, you're not going to believe what happened. But, oh yes, I've seen angels in action. Oh, yes.
Love to hear. Thank you. In nineteen about fifty-seven, driving westward down University Avenue, the sun was setting. You're nodding at me, you've heard this before. The sun was setting in the evening. And I'm kind of blinded by the light. And there appeared before me a gentleman crossing the street. I waited, I waited in that instant for the thunder.
Yep.
And he's gone. I drove around the back of the block to find him. Never forget that. And I wasn't looking for an angel. I mean, something, I was not hallucinating.
Yeah, you didn't know, yeah, what, what happened, yeah.
Thankful for him, thankful for me and looking to think, you know, maybe there is a God. At that time I was questioning. Yeah. Yeah.
I never had a angel appear to me. The only thing that I can, I think God speaks to me at night when I'm asleep because I'm not paying attention during the day. I'm too busy or pretend to be too busy. But my daughter and I was watching, I can't even remember what movie it was. But it was a very serious movie. And before my father passed away, I'd had my conversation with him. You know, we knew that it wasn't probably too far off. And I told him I wanted him to let me know that he's watching over me. So anyway, my daughter and I was watching this movie one night. And after we finished it, we thought that the movie's baseline really pertained to my son and struggles in life. And I said, you know, sometimes you just wish that you had the answers or you knew. You know, you knew what to do or you knew what to say. And at that very moment, I had this wooden angel that sat on the shelf that had never fallen off the shelf before, never fell off afterwards, but she fell off and broke a wing. At that very, right after I said, I need a sign. And so I would have to think
Yeah.
that, that was the case. And, you know, there have, when people talk about they, they have appearances. I, I, I don't, I don't understand that myself because it's not happened to me. But in so many cases, when I feel like I'm doing the Lord's service, doors just open.
Amen.
Connections.
That's what's happened with folks, the doors are open.
Yes, you know, and I'm yet to understand when Jennifer Tam wanted to open the mental health clinic. Everything just still in place. It was. So I'm still questioning why. You know, we couldn't keep it open any longer because we don't have an overseeing doctor. There's not a doctor in Blackwood County that wants to take that. And, you know, we had to, we had to close it down and I'm yet to understand when everything fell into place. I, I think to myself, surely God didn't do that, so I would go from sleep. You know, so I would have a better understanding of mental health. That, I, I just don't know. I'm still questioning that. I wish I had those answers. But I still think it was the right thing to do. I got to meet a lot of wonderful people and still have some contacts out there and maybe down the road, something else will be.
I think, I think if we all sit calm and reflect, we'll be aware that there were angels with us more than what we realized.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Does somebody here at home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not my ear drop. But yeah, I, if, if we, if we sit and we reflect it on our lives, I mean, we're really calm, there were angels. Aren't we appointed a guardian angel? Don't we have our own angels?
So there, 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 I don't know that, again, that we have a particular one, but God watches over us in different ways. So it's possible that, you know, but it, the Bible doesn't say everybody has a guardian angel, so.
Does it? But the Bible says there are guardian angels, doesn't it?
Yeah, but like, not necessarily that we're assigned one, but yes, we are protected by the Lord so many ways. And sometimes it's through angels.
Why is that? It's not an emergency, is it?
No, it's like the heat or something. It's like a furnace.
Is that a furnace?
So I have to assume that's what it is.
We hope that's what it is. Thought it's protective.
But some were, when we were awake, yours was, you said, God speaks to you when you were sleeping. Joseph was when he was asleep. The others that we'll talk about more, when they were awake, the angel came and talked to them. Joseph was when he was sound asleep. And the angel came and talked to him and told him to dismiss. He wanted to dismiss Mary privately. I'll just, I'll do the right thing. I'll just do it privately. He didn't want to worry with the letter of the law. He was more concerned with the spirit of the law. And his son would come and speak on that later in life and tell us that, you know, there's rules, but I didn't come about the rules as much as the relationship with God that I want you to know about. And so as we got, as I got started into this, they talked about disgrace, betrayal and mercy. And the betrayal Joseph probably felt from Mary when he hears that she's pregnant. But he knows he's not the father.
What age are you on, Tim?
Oh, I'm sorry. Forty-three, but I'm going to stop there so we can play the video.
Okay, and for those folks at home, you'll get to hear it, so I hope you enjoy.
Hera and Sia?
Yes, June.
But hasn't been.
I didn't say you haven't seen it.
I know you did.
Are you feeling better?
It's sort of earth narratives in the Gospel of Matthew starts very differently than in Luke's Gospel. In Luke's Gospel, we get the story of an angel immediately visiting Zechariah. But in, in Matthew's Gospel, Matthew starts with a genealogy of the Messiah, Jesus. It starts off with seventeen verses of a genealogy, which in today's world would just like put us all to sleep. But who in Matthew's world, this genealogy would remind them of the stories of their past because we hear familiar names like Abraham and Isaac and Jacob. But this genealogy is very different than any other genealogy in the Bible because this genealogy does what others do not. It mentions four women, Tamar, Ruth, Rahab, and the wife of Uriah, which is Bathsheba. These women who are all Gentile, they're all courageous, they all take risks. And they all have unusual stories about how they came to be mothers. Ruth was Naomi's daughter-in-law. Both of them had lost their husbands. They now have no children. And Naomi encourages her to dress up and delay at the threshing floor at the feet of her relative Boaz, hoping that he will redeem them and give them the child that they want in their homes. And then, of course, when we hear about the wife of Uriah, Bathsheba, we know that David has sent her husband off to war. And he is home watching Bathsheba from the rooftop, bath. He summons her, she comes to him, she becomes pregnant. And he tries to cover up the pregnancy by sending Bathsheba's husband off to the front lines of war where he knows he'll be killed. But all of these children that are born to these women are significant in the history of Israel. And all of these women are in the lineage of Jesus. So when we come to the last names in the genealogy, we hear Mary and Joseph. We expect that they are going to have an interesting story too about how they become parents. The birth stories in Luke and Matthew are very different. Of course, in Luke, we get the angel coming to Mary, the angel coming to the shepherds. We get a baby wrapped in swaddling clothes and lying in a manger. You see the story of this birth and you can be, you imagine yourselves with Mary and Joseph as this baby is born. But we don't get that in Matthew's Gospel. In Matthew, we just see this focus on Joseph and the angel coming to Joseph in a dream. We know that, that Mary and, and Joseph are engaged and that she is found to be pregnant with a child and they are not married. He's trying to decide what the next right, best thing to do is. So he decides that it would be the best thing to divorce her because that's what the law requires. But to do it quietly so that he doesn't create a public disgrace for her. And that's when the angel comes to him in a dream and says, Joseph, son of David, do not be afraid to take Mary as your wife because the child that she's carrying is of the Holy Spirit. And you will, he will be, he will be a holy child and you will name him Jesus because he will save the people from their sins. Jesus is the fulfillment of the law. So Joseph acts not on the letter of the law that he should divorce his wife, but on what God, this new thing that God is calling him to do. And he acts on the heart of the law, the heart of love and mercy for other people. So the angel comes to Joseph in his dream and really delivers this message that is unbelievable. But the great thing about Joseph is that he believes in the unbelievable. He acts on the unbelievable. After the, the angel appears to Joseph in the dream and says, don't be afraid to take Mary as your wife. Take her, marry her, and name the child Jesus. Joseph does exactly what he's told. But I think it's interesting about these stories and all of the stories of Joseph in Matthew's Gospel is that Joseph never speaks. We don't hear any words from Joseph. We just see his action. And his action shows us that he's a committed disciple and committed to doing what God calls him to do because scripture says that he is a righteous man. When the angel comes to Joseph in his dream, he called him by name like the angels do to Zechariah and Mary. He says, Joseph, son of David, do not be afraid to take Mary as your wife. Joseph now knows that he, he sees himself in this lineage to be a father of, of this child of David. Joseph goes and does exactly as he is asked to do. He becomes an exemplar of what it means to be a follower of Christ. Joseph, like his name say in the Old Testament, seems to have all of his visits from the angels through dreams. So Joseph actually has three dreams where the angels speak to him. The first, of course, is when the angel tells him to marry Mary. And the second is after Jesus is born, of course, we know Herod is a despot. He's the puppet ruler in Jerusalem. And he feels threatened by the birth of this newborn king that the magi have told him about. And so he seeks to kill the child. Just like Moses was sought, the Pharaoh sought to kill Moses. Herod seeks to kill the child. And so an angel comes to Joseph in a dream and says, Herod's threatening to kill the child and you need to flee to Egypt to protect him. And so, of course, of course, he does exactly as the angel asked him to do. And of course, then after Herod dies, the angel speaks to Joseph again and says, it's safe to return home. And instead of returning back to Bethlehem, they moved to Nazareth. And also the importance of all of this is to show us, of course, that Joseph is responsible for protecting the child. The angel gives him the message that he needs to protect Jesus. And I think, when I think about the wonder that, of course, the Christ child has been born and into all of us, that our job is the same as Joseph's. I, I think about what's going on in the world today. There's much that threatens the Christ child in the world today. There's a lot of, there's a lot of darkness. There are many Herods in the world. And we see in that that we too need to protect Jesus. And sometimes I ask myself, okay, am I doing all, am I doing all that I can do to protect the Christ child in the world that's been born in me as I would, as fiercely as I would my own children? And I think the answer to that is sometimes yes and sometimes no. And so I think in our world, if we say, how can we protect the Christ that has been born to us? Sometimes it's as easy as just showing kindness to someone in your circle of friends that, that needs some protection, that needs some help, that needs some encouragement. Sometimes it is hearing these things that are happening in the world and feeling this tug and this pull to do something. And perhaps those are the angels telling you to get involved. Perhaps, you know, perhaps it's by giving aid to those who are refugees. Perhaps it's by feeding the hungry in your community. Wherever, wherever there's a threat of the light of Christ being extinguished in the world, we are called to protect it. I love the message of the angel to Joseph because I think it's so applicable to our lives today. When we are wondering about what we should do next, what decisions we have to make. We, like Joseph, sometimes are faced with tough, moral, difficult decisions. Or we are worried about, say, in our churches, the traditions of our past and how do we go about doing something new that we feel God is calling us to? What we learn from Joseph is that we can stay connected to our past. But what we, what we need to do is listen to the voice of God. Listen to what God is calling us to do. And do what God is asking us to do and not be afraid about what other people think. Don't be afraid about how hard the next step might be. We just need to listen to the voice of God, listen to those messengers in our life that sometimes we know speak, when God speaks to us, to do what we're called to do. And act on what we're called to do regardless of anything else that's going on around us. Regardless of what we may fear the consequences might be.
Thank you.
That is Tim Wallace.
The Mary and Joseph both were spoken to by an angel. Both did what the angel had asked them to do. Both of them stepped out of their comfort zone and did this unbelievable thing. Both of them raised the Son of God. Can you imagine how blessed Jesus was to have that couple raising Him? That was willing to do and be faithful to what God was asking them to do. Again, on page forty-three.
You get the teacher's book.
Yours is different than that.
This is different, yeah, it's different than.
Oh.
So.
Do, do you know what?
Chapter starts off fifty-one, so.
Oh, okay.
Where are you at?
Uh, it says, as the group gathers. That doesn't help. Uh, it says, as the group gathers, that doesn't help you.
No, we don't have that page.
Go ahead, no, just not that page.
Well, he wanted to talk about betrayal. I felt betrayed before. When someone betrays you that you don't know real well, that's one thing. When somebody betrays you that is very close to you, that's another. And if you're in a committed relationship and find out she comes, Mary comes to him and says, I'm pregnant. I've been unfaithful to you. I'm going to tell you this story. And it's kind of unbelievable, but the Holy Spirit has impregnated me. I don't know what to do with that.
Never happened before.
Hasn't happened since.
The angel never fell and I haven't seen, so you know. That's hard to do. And until the next angel came in his dream and said, It's okay, go ahead and take her as your wife. It is. She is pregnant by the Holy Spirit.
And it is to fulfill what is written.
All of this had to take place. He had to move Egypt, they had to move back to Nazareth. All of that had to happen. So they had to have that taxation that year for all of this to be fulfilled. It's amazing.
And that wasn't man's plan or the woman's. They had another plan, that God had a better plan.
God had the better plan.
Amen, amen.
Uh, but it was nice that he listened, she listened. Disgrace. He was looking at a way before the angel and said, I'll just do this. And I love her. I don't want to make a big to-do about this. He was looking at, the letter of the law says, you know, I could have her stoned. You know, I could just do the worst thing to her. I don't want to do that. I'll just dismiss her quietly. I won't let this all go to a big boohoo. I'll just dismiss her quietly. And the angel Lord said, no, 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 go ahead, take her as your wife. Wow. And then there's the mercy. Mercy. We need that in our lives. We need grace. We need mercy.
He also, he also didn't have any relations with her whatsoever until after Jesus was born.
Thank you. This is true.
Yeah, nobody else knew that.
Right.
Nobody knew that.
Nobody else would know that. Friends, family, they wouldn't have known that.
No, I, I, well, even if he would, if they didn't need to know that, that's right.
Yes.
I mean, really.
But that's what we're saying is that, you know, people didn't realize that they didn't. Joseph and Mary would have known the real miracle. Other people may have.
Okay, now that opens up a whole new question. When were the friends and family told about the miracle?
Oh, I don't know.
Elizabeth knew.
Yeah.
Elizabeth knew, her family member, when she went to go see her, she knew immediately.
When she got pregnant, she went to her aunt who was pregnant too.
And the baby inside her jumped. Yeah, so, so somebody knew, again, we don't know for sure. There's lots of things, we don't know the whole story, but the miracle, we get to know that now. So that's what's important to her.
What, once he was born, wasn't there a star? And then, isn't it true that that, like, were there three wise men?
There were.
There were three wise men. Didn't the wise man know from way afar that the Savior was born?
Next week.
But isn't that true, isn't it in the Bible? They didn't have to be notified because, you know, like, one eight hundred wise man, they already knew. And then they started to come, correct?
So.
Yeah, they were on their way.
We're just glad they didn't have telephones in those days.
Or social media. Don't mention social media.
So when it says here that Joseph didn't have relations, that wasn't for the people in that day because they didn't know that was for us to attest to the miracle that happened. So that we wouldn't have any doubt that this was a special child, a child of God. So that's one of those things, it's almost an editorial comment being added to point to this miracle that we see over and over again in these Bible verses that we've been reading the last three weeks. That God is making sure that, you know, he knows there's going to be people that doubt from the very beginning. And so he's attesting to the validity of all this happening. Sorry, your turn.
Okay. The Pharisees hear that God desires mercy, not sacrifice. But we've been given that same assignment by Jesus. To desire mercy, not the sacrifice. You want to put up the scripture that I've long since run past. Because Matthew tells us no fewer than twelve times the event of Jesus's story, either directly or through prophets and the Hebrew scriptures.
What's that picture of?
The visitation of angels to Joseph.
Oh, I picked the wrong one. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is it in Matthew? As you said, Joseph was called to protect this new baby, which I agree. But even more than that, you know, protect, you know, from the evil one that was going to kill all the babies because he didn't want anything taken over. But even more than just protection, I mean, being a parent, being this father is even more than protection. You know, it's loving and caring for him. And we don't have details. But as Jesus grew up the way he was, I'm sure he had a father who loved him, you know, so. It was more than just protection. It's not the only role of a father.
So was Matthew a historian? A theologian? Because, the reason I ask that is because we watched The Chosen. And we saw Matthew there.
That Matthew, yeah.
Isn't that the same Matthew?
So.
It is the same Matthew?
Yeah.
Okay, so in The Chosen, he appeared to be maybe younger than Jesus. And he's telling the story of Jesus's birth pretty detailed compared to, I mean, it's more Joseph's story. So it's like, he would have had, he wouldn't have been born then. Because he was younger.
The people tell the story.
Yes, so was he in the story?
And the actors may or may not be necessarily.
Well, you know, when I'm reading this, I picture, because I love that character, that the one that plays Matthew. And so I'm picturing him writing the scripture. And it's like, oh.
He wrote things down, didn't he? Didn't he do a lot of writing? He's always writing things down.
But that wouldn't have been at his time.
Oh, no.
So he, he must have listened to other people's story or he was his story.
That's how they taught each other was. There you go.
Shall I read that for you?
Please.
Now, the birth of Jesus, the Messiah, took place in this way. When his mother Mary had been engaged to Joseph, but before they lived together, she was found to be with child from the Holy Spirit. Her husband Joseph, being a righteous man and unwilling to expose her to public disgrace, planned to dismiss her quietly. But when he had resolved to do this, an angel of the Lord appeared to him in a dream and said, Joseph, son of David, do not be afraid to take Mary as your wife. For the child conceived in her is from the Holy Spirit. She will bear a son and you will name him Jesus. And for he will, he will save his people from their sins. All this book took place to fulfill what has been spoken by the Lord through the prophet. Look, the virgin self conceived and bear a son and they shall name him Emmanuel, which means God is with us. When Joseph awoke from the sleep, he did as the angel of the Lord commanded him. He took her as his wife, but had no marital relations with her until she had born a son. He named him Jesus.
Thank you. Catches us right back up to where we are now, so.
That's as far as we went.
We have been lighting the Advent wreath. Different candle each week. This week should be the hope candle.
No, that was the first one.
That was the first.
Yeah, because they tell me what happens.
Okay, well, I'm off.
You're right.
But we've lit the hope candle. And we certainly need hope to get through life, to get through the Advent season. The dilemma before the angel's appearance to Joseph, he knew of her pregnancy, but he also knew, I'm not the father. He didn't want to expose her. But he also knew his responsibility, what he was supposed to do.
And he also knew what was written. But he's, when she told him, he had to be in shock. You know?
Unless he already knew from the angel.
No, not at first. No, he knew from the angel afterwards.
Yes.
But when she had told him, he had to be in shock. I mean, wouldn't anybody?
Yep.
And then he had forgot what was already written. I mean, he was traumatized. And God sent an angel and had to remind him, hey, look, this is what is written. Don't you remember? Or something like that. And, I mean.
Jesus echoes Hosea six, six. I desire steadfast love and not sacrifice. And then in Jesus's life, he encourages, directs people to follow the spirit of the law.
You're saved by grace, not by works.
Amen.
Took me long enough to get that. Hush. I still fast on Saturdays, so let's not smile too much.
fasting is still good, fasting and prayer is still a good thing.
Yes, it is.
I'm so used to it.
We talked about different sightings of angels. There's the story of people that needed to be rescued somehow, some way. And they see a gentleman and he takes them out of their predicament. And they're saved. And they tell their story. And they describe who it is that saved him. And the people are just scratching their head and saying, Yeah. And his name was but he died over fifty years ago. And they have no explanation. They don't know where he is. But they're here now. Someone, something, somehow they were saved.
All things are possible.
All things are possible. So the unbelievable becomes believable. I don't care if Mary might have been, they say, as young as thirteen. That's young to be a mother.
Not in those days.
Well, in our time, that's a young mother to be giving birth. But you know, some people say, you know, maybe she just didn't know how you became pregnant. It's unbelievable becomes believable.
Well.
I can accept.
Talked to her. She freaked out.
It's a miracle. Births today are miracles.
They are.
I know how they happen. And it's beautiful. It can be explained, but it's still a miracle that all of this and, and it still happens. And the unbelievable can become believable and that's what we need to still happen in our day. This time of the year, more depression happens. More suicides happen. People get anxious, college age kids. Their grades, am I going to pass or not pass? You know, young adults. This job going to continue into the next year? Everybody, relationships. It's just stressful time. And this should be the happiest time of the year.
People also get more violent this time of the year. Do they not?
Yes.
Why? It's a happy time. You've got lights out there. You've got people smiling. Everybody's in a good mood. What's this stress about?
It's probably those people standing and ringing those bells.
Oh, that drives me nuts. Now, I did ring a bell and I did it with style. No, seriously, I did. But that, that, they need trained. I mean, to just tap that thing, you know, do it with style. Don't get me started on that.
But you know, I think people who aren't believers. Are the people that.
It might.
Effects differently than those who believe.
You are right.
Because we are focusing right now. Our focus is on the birth of Christ. And the remainder of the story that we know is a gift to us. But people, the stress level of, wonder if you don't have the job, like Tim said. I think all of us think we have to live up to a certain.
Well, couldn't it, couldn't it be? One wave's going this way, which is a happy, happy wave. And then we got another wave going this way where they're discontent. They don't want to see other people happy. They can't understand why they're happy.
Yes.
Is that possible?
That's part of it. So um the other thing just as far as. Concern and people being upset during this time of year, um, the expectations of what Christmas or a holiday is supposed to be. They don't have the family, they don't have, you know, money, they're, they don't have, you know, again, Christmas is about Jesus, but. The society.
But but we've commercialized it and we.
Or even just family getting together if they don't have that. Another thing about this season, again, because somebody just asked me, well, why is Christmas? In December, you know, and um, uh, uh, picking, you know, people who the. The days aren't short, but the light is shorter, you know, so so having more night and people who the the darkness. And again, that's where we can tell people and why Christmas was picked there. This particular time to remind us that Jesus brings the light into the darkness. You know, it is a darker time of year, you know, we if the the nighttime, the dark time is is longer. At this time of year, so we remember that Jesus is the light. So and he can come in different ways and so trying to to share that. Yeah, that the angels coming in amazing ways. Um, and I and I shared once, but not everybody was here then. Uh, in the Henryville tornadoes, there were multiple tornadoes came through. We were down in Hanover. And we went down to help them afterwards and somebody shared the story of how. They were told, go to the church basement and you'll be safe there.
Yeah.
There was a person that told them.
Yeah.
Well, when they went to try to find that person. They they couldn't find them. It was an angel that saved them from the tornadoes. To go down to the church basement.
Remember, now you might. I don't know if you're old enough to remember this. Remember in uh. Wasn't it Wyoming, that school that was shot up and that that teacher? They s- an angel appeared and and saved all those children. Was that in Wyoming or was it in Utah?
How long ago?
Oh.
The very first time?
No, not qualify. I don't, a little old school in the country, I want, I want to say it's in Wyoming. And an angel appeared and protected that teacher and those students, and that was all written. Do you remember that, Ron?
I wasn't there. She went with the old person to see.
Now, that it's a true story and it's written.
Oh, I believe it. I just hadn't heard of it.
Unbelievable becomes believable.
Tim, you were talking about childbirth and the miracle. I don't know if people, and I don't even know what the commercial is about. But there's a commercial on TV right now where you presume it's just the birth of this child. And you see him take his first breath. And you know, I mean, I've been around for several years. Several kids, had a couple birth myself, but that moment. I mean, he's not breathing on his own in your stomach. Or in your womb, but it's. You see him take that first breath and.
What what does the Bible mention about the birth of? The breath of life. Somewhere in the Bible, it speaks about the breath of life.
Jesus is the breath of life.
No, but there's another where where a child is born and it takes its worst breath of life, is there not?
So probably creation, this might be someplace too, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You don't feel like that when they're about fifteen, sixteen and seventeen though.
There are challenges of life.
Jamie had mentioned it, um, our author Susan had mentioned it, uh, protecting. But it's also uh us. Protecting Christ in our hearts and in our lives, but it's much, much more. Thinking about Jesus and Mary and Joseph. As refugees. I like that. Refugees get uh a bad rap. Sometimes.
Immigrants. Yeah.
And uh. It's nice when that's brought up to say, well. Our Savior was a refugee.
That is going around on Facebook right now. Yes, it's, there's a Facebook post, it's funny that you say that. This Christmas, many will hate refugees while they set up their nativity. Scene showing refugees desperately looking for shelter.
Thank you. It is. Yeah. And so, um, yeah. Uh, and then when they, she tied that all back uh in with the scripture that. Herod said, well, I'll take two-year-olds and under, that'll. At least catch. All those kids somewhere in that range, I'll get the the boy.
That happened with Moses too.
Yes, and that will at least. I'll get them. Well, no, you didn't, because the angel again. Second time spoke to him in a dream and said. Go to Egypt. Well, now Jesus is safe in Egypt, and then the third time the angel spoke to him in a dream. Tells him it's safe to go home. Well, not home in Bethlehem, but home in Nazareth. So that another prophecy scripture is gonna be fulfilled. Can anything good come out of Nazareth, you know, uh, I mean, it's gonna be, I mean. I have you ever heard, uh, I I don't know how many, and I've got it started now, uh, I don't know how many. Different prophecies had to be fulfilled just in his birth alone. But uh, there was a buku of them, uh, just to make that happen. I mean, Joseph had to do his part, Mary had to do her part. Anywhere along the line, either of those two decide, yeah, not gonna happen. You know, it falls apart, but they didn't. They did fulfilled and did what God wanted them to do. Herod decides, you know, I'll just go with the wise man. The wise men decide, you know, we've traveled quite a ways. Maybe we got it wrong. The unbelievable. Becomes believable to us. Because we've got the Old Testament. Showing what the New Testament, the New Testament goes back and says what the Old Testament, and we've got all of this telling us. It happened. It's a beautiful story. Beautiful story.
And that was before telephones.
Was that before dinosaurs?
That's a miracle.
We had a pet dinosaur and she didn't know, no, she showed me it in her, her in. She got out her family album where. Ruth is not that old. I mean, June, June is that old.
His mother is Ruth. I subbed in the schools and some people called me Ruth.
I I I used to call you Ruth before June got.
In your head.
Yeah. We go bike riding, right? And she'll, she she knows everybody and then I'll bring up the dinosaur bit. Oh, and she gets angry.
Don't remember a dinosaur.
Yeah, you're that old.
Bless your heart. Well, let's close in uh prayer.
Tim, can we add um Elwood to the prayer? She found out um yesterday. Yeah, yesterday that her right eye, the retina is torn again. And so she has surgery tomorrow at ten o'clock, so I'd like for you to include her in prayer and please keep her in prayer. She's had a time of it.
I I have a prayer request.
Okay.
Calling all angels, go find Buddy and bring him home.
Oh, John.
Oh, okay.
He got away. They found a dog that wasn't hers. She kept it for a while.
All we gotta do is find, yeah, what all we gotta do is. Is see Facebook and we'll all know what transpired, won't we?
And I hope that.
Facebook.
Email, Facebook, uh, Twitter, whatever you said.
Oh, it was on Facebook.
Facebook uh continues circling. That's beautiful. Okay. Let's bow for a word of prayer. Our heavenly Father, we thank you. For our time. To discuss angels. Our time to recall the Christmas story. We ask that you be with each of us as we leave here and bring us back safely together. We ask that you be in the eye surgery tomorrow. That you be with Buddy and bring him home safely. That you be with us as we continue to. Find angels in our lives. As we. Look at the manger scenes. And we. Think of immigrants. That we would have a heart. For those that are homeless. That those that need to be shown love. Place them on our hearts and on in our minds. Bless us in the afternoon ahead and we'll give you the praise. Oh, man.
Very good.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.